Okay. Greetings, everyone, again. Seven fifteen, we're gonna get going now. The chairman is on his way from Falcon, I was just told, so we'll go ahead with our very first part of the meeting and see how far we get before he gets here. I'm gonna call tonight's organizational meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation from Pastor Jason Todd and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious and Almighty God, we come before you tonight with gratitude as we gather for this ceremony. Thank you for the privilege of living in this community, we call Hope Mills, and for the men and women who have been entrusted with leadership. Lord, we ask your blessing upon every distinguished leader here tonight. Grant them wisdom that rises above personal preference, courage to do what is right even when it is costly, and compassion for every resident they serve. May their decisions promote justice, strengthen unity, and bring genuine peace to our town. We pray that you would guide their steps, steady their hearts, and surround them with people of integrity and good counsel. Let Hope Mills be a place marked by cooperation, generosity, and hope, a community where neighbors care for one another and where every person is treated with dignity and respect. As we begin this new term of leadership, we dedicate this moment to you. May your hand be upon our town, and may all who lead do so with humility, integrity, and a true desire to serve. It's in your holy name we pray tonight, amen.
Amen. At this time, let Axel Fonseca from the 716th Boy Scout Troop, along with River Walker, second grader at Rockfish Elementary, come forward, face our nation's colors, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Axel? Hold up.
It's amazing, and I want to thank you for doing that. And thank you too, River, for doing that. I have just signed an approval for an Eagle Scout service project proposal for the next Eagle Scout, and I'm gonna present this to you.
If you would like to come up and take pictures, please, you're allowed to.
Too many things in the hands.
Before I get to item number one, which is approval of agenda, Commissioner Joanne Scrola is not with us tonight. She is ill. She has pneumonia and some strain of the flu that seems like everybody is getting in some fashion or another. But she deeply needs to stay home, she regrets not being here tonight, but her health just prevents her from coming, and I wanted to make that acknowledgement tonight, as she's a member of our outgoing board. So, item one, approval of the agenda, do we have any additions or deletions? Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Seeing none opposed, agenda is approved, official comments? I'll start with Mr. Marley.
Thank you, Mayor, just like to welcome everybody here tonight, and I'll leave it at that, because we got a lot to go over.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley, Commissioner Craver.
It's good to see all of you here, thank you for coming, and congratulations to all the new board members that are coming on board, thank you.
Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who is here tonight, and I'd like to thank everyone who has supported me the last twenty-six years. It's been a pleasure working for you, and I hope that the new board can continue to make Hope Mills a better place. I'd like to recognize, I believe it's Mayor Warner is with us tonight, thank you and Alex for coming. I told my wife coming here, I wouldn't go say much, and I'm not gonna say much. Thank all of you, and God bless you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Legg. Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Ken Wannan McCray.
I have a speech when it comes to my part tonight, so for right now, I'd just like to thank you all for being here, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we've had a lot of dignitaries in the room. I know that if I start calling out folks, I'll probably miss somebody, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, and thank all of you for coming, it's a special ceremony tonight as we say goodbye for now to an outgoing board, and I do say that, goodbye for now, not saying goodbye. And we have a new board that's coming in tonight as well. We've got some presentations, especially two special presentations tonight, and we will get to those here in a moment, but I wanted to just again welcome everybody to come and continue to come to our board meetings, because the only way that they will continue to govern is if folks show up at our meetings and be, and have that input, share the thoughts. So, anyway, item number three is presentations, that's A, proclamation recognizing Hope Mills' Prime Movers Scholarship under Tab One.
Whereas the Hope Mills Prime Movers Committee is invested in the youth and their educational endeavors, and whereas higher education is an integral part of cultivating well-rounded individuals, and whereas the Hope Mills Prime Movers Committee is offering a $1,000 annual scholarship to Hope Mills students that are invested and joining the committee, and whereas education shapes the way our students understand themselves and the world around them, allowing for a deep engagement with learning, and whereas the Hope Mills Prime Movers Committee wishes to alleviate some financial stress as they pursue secondary education, now therefore I, or Mayor Bellflowers, the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim December first, 2025, as Hope Mills Prime Movers Committee Scholarship Day in the Town of Hope Mills, and encourage all eligible students of Hope Mills to apply. Are they any of my Prime Movers? Kenny, will you please come to the front? Kenny is the current chair of the Hope Mills Prime Movers, I don't know, I think he has a couple of the other committee members, this was a organization that I, committee, come to the front. He is my boss, he actually, this was his idea, so I want to make sure that he gets credit for it, and this is an opportunity again for our students at Southview High School to be able to have a scholarship to attend college, and I kind of modeled this committee behind the Hope Mill, I mean, the Fayetteville, like the millennial, it's a millennial group now, they've changed the name, but is there anybody else with you? Tiffany, come on to the front, please. But anyway, this is about the third group of Prime Movers that we had, Kenny was actually one of the first members that we had when we had the first group, the first year that we did it, and like I said, they work very hard, there's a small group of them, but please continue to do what you do, and I really, really appreciate it, and I appreciate working with you, and I'm sure that Mrs. Hope Page is gonna take good care of you, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item four, consent agenda of the 2023-2025 governing body. Item A, acceptance of the 2025 Hope Mills municipal election results as certified by the Cumberland County Board of Elections under Tab Two.
Item B, consideration of approval of draft minutes, October 22nd, 2025, closed session meeting, and November 3rd, 2025, closed session, there are no attachments. Item C, consideration of approval of draft minutes, November 17th, 2025, regular meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting under Tab Three. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? We have a motion, we have a second to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, and C, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, consent agenda is approved. We have, under item five, we have two items of new business. Each board member has one, has a copy of the invoice from McCarthy Law. Item A, consideration of approval of contract invoice for Attorney Mac McCarthy for a personnel investigation. In the packet, there's no attachments, and that's the reason why, is because we just got the final invoice about, about an hour, hour and a half ago, so just wanted to make that statement, that it wasn't included when the agenda packet was published, but nonetheless, the amount of the contract invoice for Attorney Mac McCarthy is in the amount of $17,762. Before I call for a motion, is there any discussion?
This, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Legg.
I think this invoice is outrageous, and I would ask this board to not support giving him that much money.
Okay, Commissioner Legg. Any other comments?
I'll make a comment before I make the motion, unfortunately, we had to do it, so I make the motion that we approve the Mac McCarthy Personnel Investigation invoice in the amount of $17,762.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion before I call for vote? Seeing none, all in favor? Since Commissioner Scrola is not here, I will have to break the tie, which means I will vote yes. All those opposed, the motion will carry 3-2. Next item is item B, consideration and approval of resolution, R 2025 dash zero thirty, opposing the Interbasin Transfer under Tab Four, and I will read that, it's a little bit lengthy, but I'll get through it. And this resolution, before I start reading it, is being considered and approved by all the nine municipalities within Cumberland County. Resolution of the Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, opposing the Interbasin Transfer Resolution Number R 2025 dash zero thirty, whereas North Carolina environmental management officials are currently reviewing a request from the city of Fuquay Varina to increase their current transfer of two MGD to six point one seven MGD from the Cape Fear River Basin to the Newtts River Basin, and whereas the Cape Fear River is a tremendous resource to our community, providing our major source of water supply, as well as affording many recreational opportunities for our citizens, and it is our responsibility to maintain the highest level of certainty for our future water supply, and whereas these interbasin transfers create issues of equity, sustainability, as it involves one region bearing the environmental and infrastructural cost of supporting growth in another region, and it is essential to consider the long-term implications and fairness of such allocation of vital resources, and whereas reducing the flow of the Cape Fear River by transferring water could lead to greater concentrations of pollutants in the river, a reduced flow rate diminishing the river's natural ability to dilute and transport pollutants, and have detrimental effects of aquatic ecosystems, recreational activities, and public health within the Cape Fear River Basin, and whereas the Town of Hope Mills is concerned that the proposed interbasin transfer will limit the amount of water available for withdrawal to support economic and residential growth in the region due to the regulation limits under state and federal laws, and whereas the Town of Hope Mills does hereby express its concern about the long-term availability of water from the Cape Fear River, and believes transferring water from the Cape Fear River Basin to the Newtts River Basin could limit future growth opportunities for communities in the Cape Fear River Basin, and whereas water availability is crucial for sustaining economic development, agriculture, quality of life in communities, and if water is diverted elsewhere, it may constrain the ability of communities within the Town of Hope Mills to support their own development and population growth, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Jesse Bellflowers, Mayor of Hope Mills, North Carolina, and the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners, request that the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission deny the request of the city of Fuquay Varina for an interbasin transfer of six point one seven MGD from the Cape Fear River Basin to the Newtts River Basin effective December first, 2025, adopted this day, December first, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, the resolution is approved. Thank you very much for that. Originally, we didn't have any new business on tonight's agenda, we just had consent, but we had two items that just came up in the last, well, one of them today, and the other one was a few days ago, and we felt it very imperative that this current board, who's been together for two years, would have the final votes on the new business items, so I just wanted to share that just a little bit with everyone of why those two new business items were on the agenda. Next, we have presentations of the Order of the Longleaf Pine, and there are two of them. Our first one will be presented to former mayor Jackie Warner, who is here. Former House Representative, District 45, John Zooka will be presenting that, and before he does that, I just want, I'm gonna come down.
Well, come on down. That's good. It's truly honored for me to be back in the Town of Hope Mills here, I live in that hot, buttery, burning gates floor, so I come to Hope Mills as often as I can. I worked with Jackie Warner for over a decade, I guess, while she was mayor here, and it is my distinct pleasure to award this to her. For those of you who may not know her, I just want to highlight a couple of things that she's done, because this is the highest award that anyone can achieve in the state of North Carolina, signed by the governor. You know, I asked her before this, and I already kind of knew what the answer was gonna be, is what did she think was the most significant accomplishment she had while she was mayor? And if anybody's been down by the lake lately, seen the dam, that, oh, by the way, is still standing, unlike the previous two, that's what she said her best achievement was, and I knew she was gonna say that, because I knew what she went through with all the fighting and really, I, well, there's no nice word for it, was the fighting with the folks who built the one that collapsed, with a roomful of attorneys, when she was the only person in there from the Town of Hope Mills defending it, and she stood tough, she got it, and we now have that dam, and have had it for several years here. Some of the things you may not know, is she was equally as tough with me when I was in the legislature. She's not smiling too much at that one, she's being polite, but, you know, as a representative, you have to represent the towns you're in, and every time the budget came around, Jackie 'd be on the phone, it's like, John, we need, and then she'd give me a whole list of things, and sometimes I was able to get it, sometimes I wasn't. Last big budget that we did, she gave me a list, and we were very bl- is Kirk here yet? Oh, there he is, okay. My partner in crime, Kirk Devier, and I, up in the legislature, got a considerable amount of money, it's a couple hundreds of millions of dollars, and I called Mayor Warner back a time, and said, I got your list, what else do you want? And she said, what do you mean? I said, well, we're working a deal here, Kirk and I, and Billy Richardson too, and Diane Wheatley, and she gave me a list, and we got it all, and part of that is the playground out back here, and a number of other improvements to the Town of Hope Mills. You know, what she's done her whole tenure as mayor of Hope Mills, and every elected position she's had, she's always worked for the people. There have been some people who, and just as a note to the new folks taking board, taking a seat for the first time, tonight is the high point of your career, everybody loves you. Just wait until the first votes you take, and you'll find out who your true friends really are, so enjoy tonight, and I congratulate you. But, you know, she fought on, always with the people of the Town of Hope Mills in her thoughts, and she did a great deal, and I am proud to be standing up here with you. Since the Order of the Longleaf Pine, the rank of Ambassador extraordinarily privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is a special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast and select company anywhere in the free world, and the toast is, "Hears to the land of the longleaf pine, the summer land where the sun doth shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great, hears to down home the old north state." Congratulations.
Thank you.
But, no pictures? Somebody needs a picture.
Thank you. I just want to thank Representative Zooka, it's, I think, appropriate, because with, through his career in the General Assembly, and of course, I'm glad Commissioner Devier made it also, is the times that we had to have conversations, and the worry, I did worry you, and I know that, but I will tell you, yes, I will tell you that it paid off, because Hope Mills, the contacts there, and even in Congress, with the money that we got back, it pays off to make sure you pay attention to the next level, to the commissioners, and then to, and we're worrying you now with school board, so just now, my new title is I'm on the school board, and so we're worrying the board, the commissioners now, and still the house, but I just appreciate, just now, I love Hope Mills, this is quite an honor for me, I, this, in fact, one of my fellow board members told me, she said, I'm tired of being your wingman, and she said, because it seems like there's just been a lot of exciting things happening this past month, so just thank you very much. And I'd like to recognize my husband, Alex, my daughter works in Pinehurst, and she's at the Moore County School Board tonight, she couldn't make it, but my son Ted is here. They, without my family's support, there would be so little that I could get done, so I really appreciate the fact that they're here tonight too, and all those of you here that have been a part of my career, just know that I love you, I appreciate you, there's many of you in here that's worked holes for me, there's many of you that have just given me a kind word, so just know, this goes in a place of honor, and something I think's exciting too, is, and I told Representative Zooka, I said, he and I have a lot in common, but I don't have a lot in common with Josh Stein right now, because I'm a Republican and he's Democrat. If a Democrat will hear me this, that's what's been so neat about being a nonpartisan race, because nobody really knew what I was, so if you don't know what you are, you'd be surprised, you make, you do what, you're kind to everybody, and then it ends up, it pays off, so I appreciate this, and I thank you, John, for being here, and I thank the town for giving me this opportunity, this red commission, thank you.
Before I come down, I just want to recognize Cumberland County Chairman, and recently appointed, backed as chairman this morning, and he is with us, Kirk Devier, he's in the back room, Commissioner Tyson is with him, Sheriff, Cumberland County Sheriff Morgan is back there as well. We welcome all of you to our board meeting tonight. I got one more. Now, while Commissioner Legg's coming down, there were some wise words.
That you said, our president, John Zooka, tonight, you're everybody's hero. You're loved by Earth. Say that, because this is the incoming board, that's coming in, and myself and Commissioner Marley.
Former Mayor Jackie Warner, twelve years as mayor, tonight, twenty-seven years, with Commissioner Jerry Legg. I thought it was fitting that we had the former representative of District 45, John Zooka here to do Jackie, Mayor Jackie Warner, and our current House Representative, District 45, Francis Jackson, to be here to do Jerry Legg's presentation, and I present this to you. You've earned it.
Commissioner Legg, this is truly an honor for me to present this to you. I met you back in 2010, we worked together on the zoning commission, that's where I first met you, and you mentored me then, do you remember? We had some battles then, we lost some and we won some, we still ended up at Walmart, right? Ambassador, extraordinary privilege to enjoy fully all the rights granted to the members of this order, among which is the special privilege, the purpose of following, North Carolina's finest." You are North Carolina's finest. This is, I'm like, I'm getting, anyway, in the zeal of company and within the, in the best in the world, here's to you, the land of the longleaf pine, where the summer land, where the sun don't shine, where the weak grow and the strong grow together. Here it is, the home of the old North State, Josh Stein, December 1st, 2025. Congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you. I wasn't really expecting this. Again, I'd like to thank all of you, and members of the committee that appointed me with this award. It's not anything new in Hope Mills for someone to get this award, but to, for a person like me to be honored with that award is something great. I'd like to thank you all. And I better shut up before, before I have to go out of here. Thank you.
Commissioner Craver?
While Commissioner Legg's coming back, this brings back memories of Senator Joe Rayner, for those of y'all that remember him, how he used to get up and he had that memorized. And I know Alex remembers that, and it just brought back a lot of memories.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Jerry?
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on to the, through the agenda, presentations of our outgoing 2023-2025 elected officials. Under Item A, it's a presentation to outgoing Commissioner Elise Craver, if you'll meet me down front. Please, ma'am. On behalf of our Board of Commissioners, the town of Hope Mills, and the staff of Hope Mills, and the citizens of Hope Mills, I present this to you, Elise Craver, in recognition and appreciation of your public service as Commissioner of the town of Hope Mills from 1985 to 1987, first term. And then she came back for another term, 2023 to 2025, by the Hope Mills Mayor and our Board of Commissioners. And I present this to you.
I love the citizens of Hope Mills, especially my senior citizens. Good luck doing your work, and thank you. And I applaud.
Our next presentation is Item B, presentation to outgoing Commissioner Joanne Soroa, she's not with us tonight, and we will hold that till when she can pick that up. Item C, presentation to outgoing Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Kim Wanamcray, and we'll start with your speech, and then we'll do the presentation, or we do, however, how you want to do it.
No, let me, let me do my speech first. I know some of you all are standing, my speech is about 10 minutes long. My parents are not here tonight, but they told me not to do the ugly cry, and so that I will not do the ugly cry, I'm going to stick directly to this script. Good evening, everyone. Before I get into anything political, I want to first publicly thank God for giving me the opportunity to serve. I am grateful for his protection, his guidance, and the strength that he has given me throughout this journey. I also want to thank my family for standing with me, campaigning with me, and serving right alongside me every step of the way, and I would like for my family and my friends that I consider family, if you would please stand at this time.
Thank all of you for sharing her with us for six years. I just wanted to say that.
As I deliver my final remarks as the Mayor Pro Tem for the town of Hope Mills, I want to begin by expressing my deepest gratitude to our citizens, my fellow board members, our town staff, our community partners, to every person who prayed for me, voted for me, donated to my campaign, carried a sign, volunteered, worked on my campaign, or showed up like you have tonight, thank you. I am grateful beyond words. And it's not in my script, but my campaign manager-turned-friend, Laura Hardy, thank you so much for everything that you've done for me. Serving this community for the past six years has truly been one of the greatest honors of my life. I've always tried to show up each day as if it were my last opportunity to serve. The words of the late Congressman and civil rights leader, John Lewis, has always, a quote, has always deeply resonated with me. If not us, then who? If not now, then when? Those words have guided my commitment and my heart throughout this journey. Each of my swearing-in ceremonies has been standing room only, filled with people who came to show love, support, and belief in me and our board. So tonight, on my final night in this role, I ask you to join me once again, not just to mark an ending, but to celebrate what we have accomplished together. Everything that I'm about to share reflects the work of our board, our mayor, our former mayor Jackie Warner, who is there in the audience, and Mr. Greeley Mitchell, who was on the board before and is coming back on the board tonight, our staff across every department, and our public and private partners. None of this was done alone. Over these past six years, we have made history time and time again. In 2019, I was elected as the first African-American to serve on the board of the Hope Mills Commissioner, and the first female mayor pro tem. For those who said that Hope Mills would never elect someone like me, the voter said otherwise, making me the top vote getter in three consecutive elections. In 2021, voters also elected our first African-American Commissioner, Mr. Greeley Mitchell. And in 2024, we welcomed Mr. Chancellor McLaughlin as our first African-American town manager. Representative Dr. Francis, we stand on your shoulders. Your courage to run for the Hope Mills Board and Mayor five times paid the way for us. Today, you are serving in your second term as our House District 45 State Representative. In my first term, our state delegation brought historical funding back to Cumberland County. Former Representative John Zoka, and at the time, it was, he was Senator Kurt Devier, he's now the Chairman of the Cumberland County Commissioners. And Hope Mills was not left out. We secured over $5 million in state capital and infrastructure funding, the largest amount in our town's history. That support enabled stormwater improvements, creek bed clearing, an inclusive playground, one of the only ones in the region, and the construction of Hope Mills' first splash pad. We also completed major upgrades to other recreational spaces, including Reeds Journey Complex with an accessible swing, picnic shelter, benches, and new landscaping. A fenced-in upgraded basketball court and improvements at the baseball fields. In 2024, a long-awaited project that was more than a decade in the making came to life with the opening of Heritage Park. With the help of more than $1 million in grant funds, we preserved our history, creating a vital community space. The historic fumes were restored as stormwater features. The Thomas Oakman Episcopal Chapter donated to the town years ago was finally restored and integrated into our landscape. Public safety has always been one of our top priorities. We broke ground on and completed the Hope Mills Public Safety Center. And many may not know this, that our police department was not open to the pub, to the public 24 hours a day until just a few months ago. We implemented advanced public safety technology, thanks to Chief Jollinger and his, and his staff, a real-time crime center, license plate reader systems, and a crime scene unit. We went from having vacancies and frozen positions to having no vacancies and even a waiting list of officers. And May of 2024, we were suddenly informed that by August, we needed to find and fund SRO and traffic control officers for Hope Mills schools. Our police chief and the Cumberland County Board of Education worked to help us get this done. Thank you, Dr. Jordan and Ms. Warner. We also created a victim advocacy position within the police department, recognizing the need for domestic violent victims to access support and reporting right here in the town of Hope Mills. Thank you, Judge King. Hope Mills has continued to attract significant economic development while preparing for the future. Through initiatives like Elevate Hope Mills, thank you, Krista McLean, and the creation of our Economic Development Committee, with our newly adopted strategic plan, we position our town for responsible, forward-looking growth. New restaurants and retail in our area over the past six years include Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, Jersey Mike's, Fit for Life, Culvers, Eggs Up Grill, Chipotle, Wild Wild Lemonade, the Dirtbag Ale Plaza, and Freddy's. Major developments include the building of a Super Target, Wawa and Sheetz Travel Centers, one of the largest in the United States. Our industrial landscape expanded with Liberty Point, a 70-acre site with three major facilities, including one for the U.S. Postal Service. Sky 101, a 21-acre industrial supporting, supporting employment growth. Frioley Distribution, an 11-acre site. Rolise Acmeeta, a new industrial development, creating 49 jobs, and will generate over $10 million in tax revenue. In Hope Mills, there are 12 active housing developments over, in under construction with over 2,900 homes on the horizon. We added 70 new parking spaces here at Town Hall and our parks. In this room, we upgraded the sound system and camera systems. We installed two digital marquees, including one at the John Hardes Public Safety Monument Garden. And we're undergoing unprecedented level, an unprecedented level of infrastructure investment with five NCT, D O, five NC DOT roadway projects currently under design or construction. We even fixed the infamous Diva Circle, the orphan road that had the giant hole in it that belonged to no one. We expanded the multi-use path at the Hope Mills Lake and launched our new Hope Mills Land Use Plan. Our Public Works Department partnered with an outside company to complete a major asphalt regeneration project, 27 roads were restored. We completed a comprehensive pay study, one of the first known in the town's history, to ensure our employees are fairly compensated. We shifted to stagger four-year terms to support long-term planning and stability. Through a grant partnership with the league, we invested $90,000, and thanks to the grant lady, Ingrid, received $700,000 in grant funding, not including applications still pending. And for six years straight, our town received a certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Through partnerships with FTCC, we launched a HOPE program, providing citizens with the opportunity to gain new certifications and trades. During COVID-19, we secured over $22,000 for a virtual learning center for families. We participated in the ICON internship program, giving high school students firsthand experiences in local government, and partnered with the FTCC cybersecurity students to complete a security assessment for the town. And in 2019, I created the Hope Mills Prime Movers to engage our young adults ages 18 to 39, ensuring that the next generation has a seat at the table. In May, we hosted our first state-of-the-town address and partnered with Viewpoint to create a video showcasing Hope Mills to audience across the world. Hope Mills is growing, and we have become something that many said that we could not be, and we're only getting started. This is not all of our accomplishments during my tenure as mayor pro tem, but I will stop here so that we can honor those being sworn in tonight. There is still some unfinished business. To the next leaders of Hope Mills, please do not let this community become stagnant. Please be visionary leaders. For six years, we have fought for public transportation, and today, we're experiencing a tremendous amount of growth with no public transportation system to support it. That is exactly where we stand. I am encouraged, however, that our county is finally beginning to view transportation through a regional lens. It's time. With our growth and development, with the exception of our Public Safety Center, we are still operating in facilities from the 1980s. I urge our community and the new board to embrace the golfway, greenway opportunity. The current design allows us to preserve more than 90 acres of green space while providing our citizens with the modern facilities that they deserve. To our staff, thank you. You have worked hard, and we have worked hard together. Tonight, this chapter of my life is ending, but I believe, I believe my calling to serve continues. Tomorrow, I will step forward into whatever comes next. Good luck to the new board, and again, thank you, everyone.
It truly is. Not only have we served together on this board, we also serve in Fayetteville Technical Community College. And I can tell you that Dr. Kim Wanamcray's service to community is straight from her heart. So that's why I said earlier, I'm not saying goodbye. Goodbye for now. On behalf of the town of Hope Mills, our, our Board of Commissioners, this plaque is presented to Dr. Kim Wanamcray in recognition and appreciation of your public service as Mayor Pro Tem for the town of Hope Mills from 2019 to 2025, six years, Mayor Pro Tem. Continue this one. On behalf of the Hope Mills Mayor, the Board of Commissioners, and all of the town of Hope Mills staff that has supported all of us over these years, I present this to you. I believe the chairman is coming up next. Boo. I'll take this up. Okay. All right. Okay.
Laura. Kye. Tony. Judge King.
It truly is. Not only have we served together on this board, we also serve in Fayetteville Technical Community College. And I can tell you that Dr. Kim Wanamcray's service to community is straight from her heart. So that's why I said earlier, I'm not saying goodbye. Goodbye for now. On behalf of the town of Hope Mills, our, our Board of Commissioners, this plaque is presented to Dr. Kim Wanamcray in recognition and appreciation of your public service as Mayor Pro Temp for the town of Hope Mills from 2019 to 2025, six years, Mayor Pro Temp. Continue this. On behalf of the Hope Mills Mayor, the Board of Commissioners, and all of the town of Hope Mills staff that has supported all of us over these years, I present this to you. I believe the chairman is coming up next. Boo. I'll take this up.
Okay.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
Laura. Kia. Tony. Judge King.
(inaudible). Okay, so I'm, I'm not going to take long. Um, but I stand here on behalf of the entire village, your family, your friends, Mom and Dad could be here tonight, um, your grandmother, who's no longer with us, who we used the Bible several times up here to get sworn in. Um, I just want to say that we are extremely proud, my sister, Dr. Kim Wanamcray, for everything she's done for the community, the sacrifices at night for the family, the late nights working, all that good stuff. We just want to say we're extremely proud of you. God is definitely watching over you. You've definitely completed your task here. You did your calling. It's, it's that simple, and I think you pretty, your, your speech pretty much said everything. So tonight, on behalf of everyone here, I have Ms. Laura, who definitely did a lot of work, Dr. Smith, um, we got Mayor Kia, Kia, uh, just everybody who has stepped in. We just want to say we appreciate you. So I'm gonna just read this plaque. It says, Dr. Kim Wanamcray, Mayor Pro Temp, time of Hope Mills, 2019 to 25. Well done, good, and faithful servant. That's Matthew 25, uh, 23. Um, and that, that, that sums it up, because when you do what God's called you to do, everything else is going to fall into place. And it's that simple. So we love you, we appreciate you, just so I want to present these flowers to you. Yeah. And, um... Okay. Thank you all so much.
Oh, oh, don't give this a walk off.
I don't know how to do that. We're gonna have to add.
Are you able to stand without? Just one second, Kia.
Yes.
Hold on. Okay. Get it.
You just snap, and so whenever y'all want to do that, you can do it. Before the chairman comes up, I wanted to acknowledge that our great mayor from the town of Spring Lake, Kia Anthony, is here with us, and their inauguration is next Monday night. (applause) Not to take away, but all nine mayors were reelected in Cumberland County, and this morning, our chairman was reappointed, so we're all back together again. Chairman, let's go to the floor.
I'm afraid we'd like to sit down.
Just one second, please.
No, no, please, please go back.
Is it okay?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
You're nice.
So while she's making her way back, uh, Mayor, if I, have a pleasure, thank you. So I'm a little, if you know me, John served with me, uh, I'm a little bit of a perfectionist, so I'm a little embarrassed tonight, because Commissioner Tyson and I had been moving from the Fayetteville inauguration out to Falcon, um, to see Mayor Turpin swear in back out here. I grabbed two of three pla- I grabbed two plaques instead of three. Um, so I'm going to present one, uh, and then I'm going to replace it, but I'm embarrassed, but I also believe in, in telling on myself before somebody else tells on me, because they will in politics. Now, look, um, and Mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, uh, and be here. We felt this important. I'm joined by Commissioner Tyson, uh, is, is here with me tonight as well, and we feel that it's important. The partnership that we have with our municipalities is extremely important. Uh, when I became the chairman a year ago, and this morning, recommitted to the partnership that we have with our municipalities and towns, we all rise and fail together, and it's so important. Um, so I wanted to take a minute tonight. I, I don't have, uh, Representative Jackson and Representative Soka, I don't have Longleaf Pines and Josh Stein's signatures, um, but what I do have, uh, is something from the county, something that's local, and we know this is all about, uh, you know, your community, uh, and your county. Um, so first, I just want to, uh, recognize and present as an outgoing to Commissioner Craver, um, uh, for your span of service over four decades. Um, we, that, that is a lot of time serving a community over, over the course of four dec- decades. Um, and in two, in 2023, you saw a need to, to step back in your love of the community. Um, you know, one thing that I've come to learn about you, and I think our families' paths have crossed many years ago, um, but you speak for your residents, um, you're vocal for your residents, and you listen to the, the people in this community. Um, and you vote your conscience, and, and sometimes when you stand alone, and, and I understand that, and, and, and I respect that. So I just want to say thank you for your service. Um, and, and on behalf of the county, and I'll bring it up to you. On behalf of the county, I want to present you a, a county crest. So this is something that I started that we, we gave to Commissioner Leg, Leg a few weeks ago, um, but it's in appreciation and service to not only the town of Hope Mills, but the county of Cumberland. This is something that I started as a chairman. I don't have keys, and I don't have Longleaf Pines, but you have the crest of this county and the seal of this county, uh, and that means a, a great deal. So I want to thank you for your service. Yours is the one that I'm going to hand to you to get a picture, and then I'm going to replace it with the, the right one, because I grabbed the wrong one. I'm going to blame it on Commissioner Tyson, because he doesn't have the mic, and he can't speak, so. And he's in his first.
(inaudible).
But I'm gonna let, uh, I'm gonna present you this, so it's our, it's our county coin, uh, as well as our county crest. So I'm gonna present you. You want to come back? I'll come back. Blur out the... Would you know me, you know how hard that is for me to admit? But thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Next. Hopefully it stays up here. I want to ta- take a minute and recognize Dr. Kim Wanamcray. Your Mayor Pro Temp, my friend. And just a couple of words, some are personal and some are from the community, but in 2017, you came up a few votes short. A lot of folks would have walked away, but you stayed engaged, you kept showing up for Hope Mills, and you believed, because that's who you are. And in 2019, you didn't win. We heard, you made history. You earned more votes than any commissioner candidate, and you earned the title of Mayor Pro Temp. And in that night when you swore in, I just, uh, just became a senator, a state senator, and I had the opportunity to swear you in. Uh, that was a very special night, and I remember a lot of your family here, um, and so it was very special for me as well. But, uh, as you, as you alluded to, you made history, uh, in your first election and then some, and across three different terms, you served faithfully with two mayors. And you can see, they're both here tonight, um, and I'm sure they're, they're honoring you in the service to this community. Um, and that speaks to the continuity that you've been able to provide and the steady leadership across two administrations. Three consecutive elections, three times as a top vote getter. That's a community saying that we trust you, keep leading us, and keep speaking for us. And that's what you've done. That's what I've watched you do, whether I was in the Senate and now coming back as a commissioner, and made it real easy, because I knew both of you, I knew the mayor and the Mayor Pro Temp, and we were able to have sometimes those hard conversations, but productive conversations. You helped Hope Mills, as been alluded to, secure a lot of the state funding when John, Representative Soka and I were in the General Assembly. And you spoke to it, so you stole a lot of my speech, so I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit, but the impacts are going to be felt, and that was you advocating. That was others on this board advocating because of the relationships that we had that you heard Representative Soka talk about. You said your role was never about you. It was about blazing a trail and leaving a legacy for those who follow. You truly understood your assignment, and you truly delivered it. This county is grateful for your partnership between Hope Mills and this county, and I'm personally grateful for the service that you've given to this community, not just Hope Mills, but across this entire county. And more importantly, I'm extremely blessed and honored to call you a dear friend. So with that, I want to present you, uh, our county crest, uh, along with coin, to Dr. Kim Wanamcray, Hope Mills Town Commissioner, in appreciation of your service and dedication to the town of Hope Mills in Cumberland, in County of Cumberland, December 9, 2019 through December 2025. Mayor Pro Temp, 2019, 2021, and 2023. So Commissioner Tyson, will you join me? Should I have you phone in? (laughter) (inaudible). of this, I promise. And I have, we have one for Commissioner, uh, your, your outgoing commissioner as well, we'll make sure she receives it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Sherman.
(applause) Dr. Kim Wanamcray, Mayor Pro Temp, um, to my sister, to my friend. Um, you know how important you are to our staff. Um, you know that in 2013 or 2023, when I was interim, I almost cried at a community meeting when you were contemplating not running, and I told you I couldn't do this without you. And so, in the vein of where your sister left us in Matthew, is where I'll speak from tonight. Matthew, Chapter 7, verse 7, in the Bible reads, "Ask, and it shall be given you; seek, and ye shall find; knock, and it shall be open unto you." The context of this verse is genuinely understood to be a metaphor for prayer. The meaning behind knocking represents the persistent and active faith in our approach to our relationship with God. It implies that we continue to seek answers and opportunities even when they aren't immediately apparent. The promise is that by continuing to knock, a door will be opened with the contents of that room being provided by the Most High, which can mean receiving an answer to a prayer. In city government, there are always opportunities or doors that we need to have faith in as it relates to the contents of these rooms that we enter. Dr. McCray, you have represented yourself to be the steward of the contents of these rooms of opportunity, facilitating the town's involvement in the League of Municipalities, small cities programs, the participation and attendance at the League of Cities conferences, NC BMO, and other initiatives. Most importantly, you have been a beacon of light and a true advocate for our staff. So in essence, to our citizens and to all of us, you represent one of the most important individuals, fully aware of what the importance of the contents of these rooms are and the impact that they can have if we truly believe. It's with that reverence that we provide to you a key, a key that represents the access to greatness that you have provided, access to a more impactful environment here in Hope Mills. So tonight, we present to you the key to the town of Hope Mills. Our last presentation is Item D, Presentation of Outgoing Commissioner Jerry Leg. Originally, our town clerk, Ashley Wyatt, had all the presentations in alphabetical order, and I called and said, "Nope, I think the longest-serving commissioner shall be presented last, as he will be the last to step off the board." And I think that's out of respect. Commissioner Leg, I'm going to go down and get your plaque. I'll bring it up to you if you want. Come down.
(inaudible). I don't know that we'll have another commissioner that may serve 27 continuous years. I don't know, but I can tell you one thing, that Commissioner Jerry Leg, his entire heart has been in service to community for all of these years, with the support of many friends and family and the boards that he has served on. On behalf of the town of Hope Mills, I present this plaque to Commissioner Jerry Leg in recognition and appreciation of your public service as commissioner for the town of Hope Mills in 2003, 2025, by the Hope Mills Mayor and our Board of Commissioners and our town staff, who are dedicated every day to provide exceptional services to our community. Commissioner Leg, I present this to you.
(inaudible). I gotta say a word or two on that one. This town has done so much to honor me for the stuff that I have been involved with. Uh, I have served with the mayor, as a commissioner, I have served with Mr. Marley, and now Dr. McCarty, Dr. McCray. Ms. Craver and I go back a long time ago. Ms. Craver and I go back a long time ago. Francis and I go back a long time ago. Judge, glad to see you here. I'm glad I'm not before you. I don't want that either. I'd like to say to all the commissioners coming on, congratulations. It's not a hard job. You just do what's right. That's the way you serve as a commissioner. Listen to your residents, what they want. Not what they need, but what they want. Listen, listen to them. A prime example is Mr. Marley. He's here all the time to support his son and what this town needs. And I thank you for that. There's been times that I haven't been able to make this walk. I was injured in a car wreck back in December. And I'm getting over that. Getting cancer cut off my face. I'm getting over that. Thank the good Lord for healing me the way he has. I know a lot of you have heard my name around the town, at the ballparks and all that. I'm proud of those things. They make me what I am today. The town dedicated a ballpark to me a couple of weeks ago. I'm so proud of that. Just proud of that. I see a lot of familiar faces here tonight. Some of them are our faces we see all the time. Chief Dollinger's here. He's doing a fine job for the town. If you need anything, give him a call. He'll try to help you. Drew Holland. He's almost a fixture here. He's been here a long time, and he has also done a fine job. I have worked with some, some fine people. Mr. Mitchell, you're one of them. Our town staff, our town attorney. Thank you for making us what we are today. We're not just a town. We're a place where people want to live. And we gotta keep it that way. So I urge the new board to stick to the, to the example that we have going now. And again, I'm gonna say, good night and thank you very much.
Yep. Mayor pro tem, Dr. McCray.
Two minutes, I promise. It just doesn't feel right not, I know that Joanne isn't here tonight, but it just doesn't feel right not saying anything about her tonight. Joanne can come off sometimes as being like a little rough at the edges, but she is one of the most engaged board members that I've ever worked with. In my first surgery, I couldn't drive for eight months. Joanne came and picked me up. She came and picked me up and brought me to every board meeting and took me home every night. So she can come off as a little rough, but she is one of the most kindest people I've ever met. And again, like I said, she's one of the most dedicated and engaged board members that I've ever served with. And so I just didn't feel right not mentioning her at all tonight.
Thank you, Mayor pro tem, Dr. McCray. I was gonna say something very close to that at the end, is that I know she's ill and she would love to be here. She really would. She was faithful with service to community. And she will be missed. And that's why I say, not goodbye, goodbye for now. And I'll probably stop there because before we get to Item 8, which is the, the new board will come on. This 2023-2025 board term has now expired tonight. It's been a very good two years with this board. We've had a lot of challenges. We've had a lot of opportunities. But I can tell you one thing. The energy that we put together and where we are now in the town and where we're going is that our new board will come on and build on the, on the shoulders of this board. Just like when I came on as mayor two years ago, I built and served on the shoulders of Jackie Warner, who was mayor for 12 long years. And I said this to her, and I'll say it again tonight, to her and Alex and Teddy. Jackie, I don't know how you did it for 12 straight years. With that said, it is time for the existing board members to please leave your seats, and we'll get to Item 8. One last round, please, to say...
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 8. The administration of oath of office to the mayor and to the Board of Commissioners. For the mayor and the top three commissioners, the board will be 2025 to 2029. And then two commissioners will be 2025 to 2027. Item A is the oath of office administered to Mayor-elect Jesse Bellflowers by Robbie Hicks, senior resident, Superior Court Judge. I will come down, and I hope my family will come up. All right, Jesse Bellflowers. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
The constitutional laws of the United States.
The constitutional laws of the United States.
And the constitutional laws of North Carolina.
And the constitutional laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As mayor of the town of Hope Mills.
As mayor of the town of Hope Mills.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Our granddaughter is not here.
How old is granddaughter?
Our granddaughter is not here all night. It goes, her and her husband, we're in East Baden, Germany. They've only been there three weeks now, I think. And this is, this is their first time together. And so, two years ago, they were here, but tonight, they're in Germany, serving our great nation. So I just wanted to make that acknowledgement. I don't want to thank my family for staying the course, for believing. Without them, I wouldn't be standing here. And I wouldn't have had an oath to read tonight to have been supporting my family. So I thank you. Thank you very much. I'll read the list. Item B, oath of office administered to town commissioners-elect. First one is Cynthia Hamilton by North Carolina House Representative, District 45, Francis Jackson.
Aye.
Aye. Cynthia Hamilton.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and maintain the constitutional laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the constitution of the United States.
And the constitutional laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a commissioner of the town of Hope Mills Board.
As a commissioner of the town of Hope Mills Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Commissioner Hamilton, is there anything you would like to tell us? Before you, before you...
Not right now.
Come on. You're up. You're up. Congratulations. Commissioner-elect Brian Marley by Mrs. Tracy L. Marley, public notary.
I state your name.
I, Brian Marley.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
The constitutional laws...
The constitutional laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitutional laws...
And the constitutional laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge...
And impartially discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a commissioner of the town of Hope Mills Board.
As a commissioner of the town of Hope Mills Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much.
So right quick, I'll, I'll try not to take up a lot of time. I appreciate everybody working with us tonight. I've heard people say that I'm a man of few words when I'm up here. I don't really talk a lot, and I kind of let my vote and do my talking for me. But sitting up here tonight, listening to everything, I actually got a couple of stories. But I got some comments I want to make. I've been connected with this town a long time. I love this town. I live here, grew up here. I became connected with the town in 1996 when I got hired here full-time at a high school, or shortly after high school, full-time at the fire department. So I've served either full-time or on this board for 29 years. I've been connected with the town. So my love is with the town here. I want to thank my family and friends for being here tonight. I want to thank everybody that's supported me along the way. It's been 10 years. Two years in 2017, I'll tell you a little story about Dr. McCray, how I met Dr. McCray. I was running, I'd been on the board for four years. I was running for reelection. And me and her stood out back behind the old rec center. And we talked a lot that day. I met her, got to know her really well. Both of us lost that election. So, so after that, you know, we, we kept in touch a little bit here and there. Somebody's sitting in this audience, he probably doesn't want me to say his name, but I walked away from the board. I had no intentions of running again. And Mr. Warner here, Mr. Alex Warner, he, I got a phone call from him about the election, timed that next election, and he'd said, I needed to come talk to him. So he, he talked to him a little bit, talked to my wife. I decided to run for the board. Me and Dr. McCray ran for the board again. Both got elected that year, and I've served ever since. It's been a big part of my life. Along the way, though, there's some board members that aren't with us anymore, some that are still here. Along the way, there are some board members that aren't with us anymore, some that are still here. Mr. Legg, appreciate your service too. Mr. Legg was a commissioner when I worked full-time for the town. And I've served with him every year that I've been on the board. He's been there. We're going to miss you. I know we had our differences and everything, but we always talked about it and worked it out. And we've worked well together. Going to miss Dr. McCray as well. Some other ones, when I first came on the board, I already mentioned Mr. Legg, but Mr. Gorman is no longer with us. He taught me a lot about being a board member. Ms. Warner, she was the mayor. You know, she, I was really rough when I first got on the board. So me and, everybody knows that me and Ms. Warner went rounds and rounds over the Walmart up there. And, but we worked that out. I appreciate it. Another one is Mr. Dever. He's no longer with us. We had a vacancy on the board. We appointed Mr. Dever. I call him Mayor Dever, but we appointed Mr. Dever. That was one of the first things we done. And I can remember sitting there during that, cheering him sitting behind me. And every time I'd start to say something, he'd reach down. If I shouldn't have said, he'd reach down and tap my leg and say, "Not right now." And that meant, that meant shut up. So I think that's, I think that's why I'm so quiet up there sometimes. Ms. Jackson, actually got to serve her on the board for a few meetings. She was appointed to this board, but unfortunately couldn't stay at the time. But I just wanted to share those couple of stories. I look forward to working with the new board. To move the town forward, keep it going in the direction we are. I want everybody to know, I will say this, people don't know it about me, but That Bible back there, my mother and father gave me that Bible in 2002 when I gave my, my life to the Lord. In 2002, and I appreciate it. I want to thank my mom and dad. My mom's not here. I wear it as purple tonight for my mother. She never made a swearing in because she was always battling a sickness and couldn't be here. But I know she's with me tonight. I thank my dad, my sister, my son Ray. My good friends back there, I got a bunch of them, but John and me and Steve. And as they always say, my smoking hot wife. She's, she's, she's been with me through thick and thin. She's, she's had to endure everything that I've done. And if it weren't for the town of Hope Mills, we wouldn't be married because I met her while I worked for the town. So I give, I give a lot, I give a lot of credit to this town. Thank you to the employees, everybody that's ever supported me, and I look forward to another term. Thank you.
Welcome back. Commissioner-elect Greeley Mitchell. Will be sworn in by North Carolina House Representative District 45, Francis Jackson.
I state your name.
I, Greeley Mitchell.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain
The constitution and laws of the United States.
The constitutional laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The constitutional laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a commissioner of the town of Hope Mills Board.
As a commissioner of the town of Hope Mills Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very few words. There's two things I don't believe in wasting. My health and time. That's all I got to say about that. Look forward to working with y'all.
Commissioner-elect Hope Page. The oath of office will be administered by Tiffany M. Whitfield, District Court Judge.
Jordan Christina Irene.
Plenty of room for everybody. Come on.
My lovely ladies. Sabrina, come on.
I just want to take a moment to personally say, I am just humble and ecstatic that I was asked to do this oath. And I look at her village, and it's so similar to mine. You have your family, your courthouse family, your sorority, and your just community support. And that's who you're going to stand on the shoulders of. And that's what's going to be your backbone for this process in any service. If you will place your hand on the Bible with grace. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Hope Page.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain
The constitution and laws
The constitution and laws
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitution and laws
And the constitution and laws
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a commissioner
As a commissioner
Of the town of Hope Mills Board.
Of the town of Hope Mills Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I feel like I'm going to have to do a panoramic. Because you have one or two folks with you. Took up the whole room.
We have former Cumberland County Commissioner Charles Evans is in.
I don't have a lot to say. I just want to say thank you everyone for coming out. As you can see, this is not about me. It's about everybody in our town. And that's my plan to continue to work for the citizens within the town of Hope Mills. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner-elect Lisa Trummel. Come forward, please. The oath will be administered by North Carolina House Representative District 45, Francis Jackson.
I state your name.
Ms. Trummel.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain
The constitution and laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a commissioner of the town of Hope Mills Board.
As a commissioner of the town of Hope Mills Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You're ready to take good photos? Of course. Thank you very much. I just want to thank God for the position that he put me in. Forgive my voice for shaking because I'm terrified up here. Just thank God that he has led me here and he makes all of my decisions. And I just want to read something from the love chapter in the Bible. "And now I will abide as faith, hope, and charity, which is love. These three, but the greatest of these is love." If we don't have love for our neighbors, we're not going to do well here. But I believe this board behind me and everybody in here has a love for each other. And that we're going to move Hope Mills forward and thank you for your support.
Okay. Before I present the 2025 Board of Commissioners, there's one more step that we have to take. And that's item number nine. Item B, the official election of the mayor pro temp. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
For who?
For Hope Page, mayor pro temp.
We have a motion for Hope Page as mayor pro temp. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor. It is a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Temp.
Got to get sworn in.
Got to be sworn in.
Got to go sign another paper.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Hope Page.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain
The constitution and laws
The constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
And the constitution and laws
And the constitution and laws
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially
Discharge the duties of my office
Discharge the duties of my office
As mayor pro temp
As mayor pro temp
Of the town of Hope Mills Board
Of the town of Hope Mills Board
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Citizens of the town of Hope Mills and our distinguished guests, I present to you the 2025 Board of Commissioners. Item 10, consent agenda for the 2025-2027 governing body. Item A, consideration of adoption of Resolution R. 2025-031, setting the meeting schedule for the calendar year 2026 Board of Commissioners meeting under Tab 5. B, consideration of reapproval of existing board rules and procedure. That's under Tab 6. C, consideration of board committee liaison appointments. That's under Tab 7. It was updated today. Item D. Item D, consideration of appointment of commissioners to ex officio seats. That's under Tab 8. Item E, consideration of approval of code of conduct for elected officials under Tab 9. F, consideration approval of the Hope Mills social media policy for elected officials. That's under Tab 10. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda of the 2025-2027 governing body?
Motion to approve is read.
Do I have a, I have a motion? I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, we just need to make adjustment to the policy rules. Change to the two-year term. You know, when we do the election.
We're going to do that in January.
Okay.
Any changes to any, during the, during the discussion, any changes to any of the consent agenda items? We can revisit those in January. And we will, especially the rules of procedure. Seeing no more discussion, all in favor. Seeing it was a unanimous vote, consent agenda is approved as presented. That's the end of the consent agenda. Item 11, old business, none. Item 12, new business, none. Item 13 Item 13, informational items are next. Regular Board of Commissioners meeting will be here Monday, December 15th. I'd also like to say town offices are closed for the holidays, December 24th, 25th, 26th. Any staff comments? No staff comments? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm going to make an exception to this board and ask our outgoing Commissioner Jerry Legg to make that motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Seeing none opposed, we are adjourned. There's a reception at the rec center for anybody that wants something tonight. Dan, I just, I did it, Dan.